Call a meeting to a short order. Could please stand for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Stephanie, can you please call a call?
Chair Riquendo.
Present.
Vice Chair Carney.
Present.
Member Lantri.
Present.
Member Rivera will have an unexcused absence for the record. Member Grigsby will have an excused absence for the record. Member Douglas.
Present.
And Member Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum. All members will be voting members this evening. And before the first action item is called, staff would like to make an administrative announcement relative to tonight's agenda.
Good evening. Dag Marie Segarra, Deputy Director for the Community Development. Just wanted to make sure that if there's anyone in the public for the advertisement of the potable water element, it was advertised to be at this planning commission meeting, but we have to pull it out of the agenda until date certain. So we will be announcing, we're going to reschedule and re-advertize the item. So that item will not be heard tonight.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, there's still the minutes. I jumped a little bit ahead of you. Still the minutes from July 14th.
If anybody's gone over the minutes of the last meeting and would like to get an approval for them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes. Excuse me. We'll be hearing Resolution Number 2023-162R, DRC case CNU 23-00007.
Good evening. Carol Cepeda, Senior Planner for Community Development. Just wanted to put as a disclaimer that the mailers that originally were sent for Tito Loft were sent with the incorrect use. It said that it was for private school. We did send new mailers out with the correct information that stated that it was for the correct use, which is for the exotic bird breeding.
When was that sent?
It was sent within the time frame within there. So it was literally like right after it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Do we get a copy of those things that you mail out so we know what's happening? Is it a postcard, a letter?
It's sent as a, yeah, it's sent as a mailer within that radius.
Okay. Because I had one of my neighbors ask me, I said, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, it's sent in as a mailer to the address. So if they see just something that's not for theirs, then they just throw it in the garbage. Okay, thank you. No problem. This is a conditional use for Tito Loft, conditional use. It is within a .34 total land acreage estimated. We are requesting approval of Resolution Number 2023-162R with conditions. This property is zoned R1A, which is single-family dwelling zoning district with a future land use of low-density residential. The proposed conditional use, keeping and breeding of exotic birds. The development is a conditional use in the single-family dwelling zoning district, and there is no adverse impacts to the facilities. This is the maps for the zoning and the future land use, which shows the R1A zoning district and your future land use of low-density residential. This is the site plan provided by the applicant for the loft that is being requested, showing the setbacks and the location of the loft. The strategic plan is growth management to create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through sustainable planning for all generations. DRC staff recommendation is approval of Resolution 2023-162R with the following condition. One, for as long as the use permitted hereunder continues, the applicant shall comply to the standards and guidelines for the requested use per Section 3.20, .32 of the Land Development Code. And two, if there are three documented violations within any 12-month period, the conditional use will be taken before City Council for possible revocation. Staff recommendation is approval of Resolution 2023-162R with conditions as stated by staff. And we are requesting action of approval of Resolution 2023-162R with conditions as stated by staff. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is here available for any questions that the commission may have.
I have a question. There's no, there doesn't appear to be any limit to the number of birds, I assume?
So usually when it comes to animals, that is something that is per animal control, and also this is a license that's given to them per the state. And so that is done through that, and we work off of the conditional use of zoning itself.
Okay.
Dag Marie Segarra, Community Development Deputy Director. Our, the section of the code of 3.20, .32 limits no more than 30 per side.
Okay.
So there is already a limitation of the numbers of birds.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No, probably for the applicant, I would say. I'm just questioning the survey. It does not look to scale. I'm looking at 55 feet from the north and 25 feet from the south appears to be the same distance, and then 25 feet from the west is much smaller than the 25 feet from the south. So I question the accuracy of the site plan or the survey.
It's a conceptual plan?
So the demonstration, the demonstration on the package is as a conceptual plan for the request. The applicant still has to apply for a building permit for the structure, and that's when the scale and survey will be provided. But this is just a sketch to indicate the location of where they're planning to put the structure.
Understood. And then that's, this is per the setbacks, the 25 feet?
And if you look in the section of the keeping and breeding of birds in our code, it requires certain distances from the side and the rear to the adjoining properties. So that's them showing that they are meeting that requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come up and speak? And could you please state your name and address, please?
My name is Emilio Ohtano.
Speak on the microphone, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Emilio Ohtano, and I tried to get the permit for, my hobby is raising pigeons.
Sir, if you could just speak a little louder and state your address as well, Mr. Ohtano. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Emilio Ohtano. I lived in St. Cloud for 22 years, and I tried to get my permit for a conditional use to keep my hobby, there's a racing pigeons. And I'm here to ask, answer any question that you guys ask.
Your address is 326 Missouri? Is that right, sir?
Yes, 326 Missouri.
Thank you, sir.
I live before him, 4575 Canoe Creek Road. That's where I live, I'm over 23 years.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for him?
Is there fencing around the property that helps give visual?
Yeah, it is a fence, a white fence of six feet around the property.
And it's high enough that it would block the?
Yeah, we should have did it two weeks ago.
How long have you had, how long have you been doing this?
I'm doing this for more than 50 years. I got pigeon from age seven, when I got my first pair of pigeons.
What are the pigeons going to be used for?
Well, we have a club in Nokala, and we raise between 20, 19 more loft. And what we do, we train the pigeon to come back from 100 miles to 500 miles. The pigeon training in the morning, you know, when it's a race season, one hour in the morning, they go inside the loft. They don't, they have to be inside the loft for 22 hours. In the afternoon, late in the afternoon, they fly one more time, training, and go inside, eat, drink, and rest, ready for, training for the race. We race on Saturday's or Sundays, depending on the season, depending on the combined.
You're on Missouri Avenue, aren't you? You're in Missouri Avenue.
In Missouri Avenue, yes. 326 Missouri Avenue.
Do these pigeons make any noise?
They don't make any noise.
I don't know.
No, yeah, they don't make any noise. Like I said, they live inside the loft all day, they be inside, and they don't make any noise. And they have to be inside the lofts because you could, loft's a race for a couple seconds. So you train your pigeon, as soon they finish training, they have to go inside the lofts. They can be around and, not even in your loft roof, they have to come inside immediately. Because you could, you're training like that because it's not, maybe you could lose a race for a couple seconds, so.
Is the loft open or semi?
No, it's, well, they have a windows, you know, to ventilation.
Enclosed?
Yeah, they have ventilation. I know you guys have the pictures. I sent the pictures.
No, it's okay. I just, I was just curious.
I just want to know, because I live near you.
Oh, yes.
And the airplanes from OIA go pretty low. Is one of those pigeons going to get?
No, they don't make any noise.
No, 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 it's not the noise. It's the collision with the airplane.
Oh, no, they don't fly high, they fly, you know.
Some of the airplanes aren't that high.
No, the pigeon don't fly high, no.
Okay.
No, they don't.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
No. You want to see if anybody?
No further questions.
There are people with public comments.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Let's do public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to open up for public comments. I have Mr. Willard E. Congrove.
Do I start? Can I ask?
Name and address, please.
Okay, they, what, he said exotic birds. A pigeon is not an exotic bird.
Mr. Chairman, just again for members of the commission and for the members of the community that are here and attend tonight, the commission is here to take public comment, public feedback. The commission is not here to answer questions from the public.
Well, I just ask.
I understand, but I'm just advising. They're here to take your feedback, and then if you have additional information you're seeking from the applicant, from staff, certainly can have those discussions.
I'll just go on what it says here.
I understand, but I'm just advising you, the commission's role.
But like you say, where he's located, I know it's right next street over from me, it's going to be a business. It's not going to be raising a hobby of, you know, I know pigeons, pigeons are, they're dirty too, but not, you know, like I heard you say, they're allowed to have at least 30 of them. So a group of birds, they're dirty, they don't make a lot of noise, but it's going to be a business in a residential area. So how could you even think about something like that when you're in a residential area? This is going to be a business. He says about, he said, he's, hey, sir, I'm talking. He said, you know, they're going to be racing to win money and stuff. So it's going to be a gambling situation, and it's going to be a high-traffic area, you know, in a residential area. So it just don't make sense. So you're opening the door, I know you've got, I've been here in St. Cloud for three years, I live right there on Minnesota. Okay, you've got an ordinance that says I can have five chickens, but I cannot breed them because you're not allowed to have no roosters. So you're letting, you're giving, you're going to give this guy, but I'm not saying you are. This permission to raise racing pigeons, I'm familiar with them because I used to raise them too, but not in a residential area. I lived in the country. So it doesn't make sense for, to have it, you know. It's, it just don't make sense because it's a residential area. So you're going, you're going, if you approve it, he's going to have a business. He's raising and breeding pigeons, so he's going to be making money. So it's going to be a business. It's not going to be, you know, my hobby for 27 years. That's a good hobby, but it's going to be a business. It's going to be a money-making business, and the city's not going to acquire nothing from it. It's just going to be a high-traffic area, people coming in. He's going to be, like I say, he's going to be breeding and raising, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. If you could answer the keeping and breeding of exotic birds, is that the category that they would, is that a set category for conditional use?
Yes.
If this would fall under, because I know there's only so many, right?
That's correct. The only reason that we are calling it exotic birds is because the section of the code where the racing pigeons is located is titled exotic birds. Also, for the benefit of the public, just to answer a couple of questions, the ordinance, we can provide a copy of the ordinance to the public if they desire, but the code is very clear when it states the maximum amount of birds that they can have on site. And it even talks about any breeding. They says that if they exceeding the amount of 30 birds, they have 30 days to relocate any new hatching birds. Also, in regards to the commercial use, it's very specific saying that the property has to be a single-family residence. So part of the conditions of approval states that any violations to any of these conditions that are stating in the code can be, can be caused to be brought back forward the conditional use and be revoked.
By the council, right?
By the council.
Yeah.
That's correct, because this board is making a recommendation to City Council, and then this is going to be scheduled for City Council.
September 14.
September 14.
For the first reading?
For the, no, it's only one here.
Or that this one only gets one?
Yeah, it's only one here, and that will be the final approval by City Council.
Before the further public comment, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder to those in attendance that the planning commission is an advisory commission. It's going to take the feedback and make a recommendation to the City Council. As you've heard from, from staff, this matter will be heard on September 14th by the City Council. If you wish to be heard at that time, be aware of that as well.
Thank you, sir. The next person we'll be hearing from is Ms. Tara. Didn't want to mess up your last name.
Yeah.
State your name and address, please.
Tara DePuma, 307 Wisconsin Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
My issues are the droppings are very damaging to property, home, and lawn, and it's toxic to dogs. How are you going to control where the pigeons are going to defecate? Also, the fungus that's in the droppings is very toxic. It causes, one of the ingredients of, just causes, I can't even say this, it's a lung disorder. I already have lung issues, and I'm right in front of Catty Corner to him. Pigeons attract other pests such as rats, flies, cockroaches, and mites. Nine out of 10 birds do not make it back to their loft. They're usually, they usually perish because they're exhausted, or if they don't make it back, they're, or they're poor in the race, they get gassed, drowned, or they wring their necks. And would you want a pigeon racing next to you? Who's going to monitor the loft to see if it's sanitized as often as it needs to be? Animal control can't go in this property. How are you going to monitor how many birds he has? Animal control can't go in there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I brought you paperwork. I brought you about exotic birds. And my questions?
Catherine, say your name and address.
My name is Catherine McGinley. I live at 313 Wisconsin Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. First, my first question, which I have given you a copy of, Mr. Ohtano has already placed this loft on his property with the modification, a huge shed house with a modification for loft and a six-foot privacy fence around his property. So since he has already done this and spent considerable money, is he already guaranteed a variance for this? And that was my second question, where the shed and fence permitted already because they are already on the property set up. If there's birds in there, we do not know. Also, how familiar are you with the property owner? He is on Facebook, he's different things like that. The raising of exotic birds, are you familiar with the raising of pigeons? The noise level, the habits? The sale of, these pigeons can go for as high as a million dollars when they breed them. I've learned a lot about pigeons. I'm from up north, we don't like pigeons. Racing of, the racing of these birds. And also, as a commission, how familiar are you with any other lofts in St. Cloud? And what is your encoding enforcement's experience with them? These are all things I'd like you to take into consideration because since my property is on its borders in, in the back, and I love my clothesline. I don't want the bird pooping on them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Do we have no other public comments? We're going to be closing public comments. Any comments amongst us?
Could we get them to address in terms of the bird droppings concern?
You wish for the applicant to respond?
Yes.
Yep, if the applicant can come forward, and the commission may have some additional questions of the applicant. Mr. Ohtano? Just state your name again and your address for the record.
What was your name and address?
Oh, Emilio Ohtano.
Your address, sir?
326 Missouri Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes, if you don't mind, could you address for us in terms of concerns in regards to the bird dropping? So you said you've been doing this for a number of years.
Yeah, let me explain. My birds is a very expensive bird, you know, like I said, racing pigeons. But like I said, they live inside the loft, and we clean, as soon as it's flying, we clean. So because you, we're doing for our hobby, we don't make money with that bird. I don't make money, nobody make money. We make trophies. That's why we, we play for that. That's a hobby. That's something that I'm doing from seven years old. So I don't make money, I don't bother nobody, my bird is inside, I clean every day the perch, and once a week I clean the floors. So we don't, you training the birds, you keeping the birds for a race, and it's something that you're doing because you like it, it's not money. Not everybody that plays games play for money, you know. I do it like that because I like it. I don't bother nobody. Nobody live, you know, next to my doors. I got something, if, I don't know if I could tell you from my old neighbors, I don't want to show you. Can I?
It's going to become part of the file, so you'll have to, they can refer to, you'll have to relinquish control of it.
We're like a family. We have another thing, we have pigeon party every year in Kissimmee Valley. People came from all over the state, we meet, you know, we're like a family. We don't do this for money. And like I said, we training your bird for a specific race, so you have to keep your birds healthy. So I, vitamins, supplements, grids, you know, we care the birds. It's not like I have chicken and you put it in your backyard and you see it once in a while, no. You keep your bird 24/7, you know. You go every day to your loft, two, three times in a day, checking your birds, make sure they don't, they don't be sick. If they sick, we go to the vet. So it's nothing that I'm going to damage nobody, it's, I don't do anything, you know. I did everything right. I asked for the permit, I went to, I put my shed with permit, I do my fence, I do everything to keep my hobby. I don't see any reason why they scared so much about, about the hobby, because I don't bother nobody. I be inside my house, I'm doing inside my house, my birds inside the house. They don't, they don't bother nobody. They can be in nobody's house and, and the roof of nobody. And we clean every day. We have clean, we need to have the loft clean because we don't, we don't want any sick pigeon inside. So they're expensive pigeon, and not expensive, we, the food is expensive, the training, the gas, everything you do for, raise your pigeons is expensive, especially right now. We training three times a week, you know. You need to love this animal and to be in a race club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the commission have any more questions for the applicant?
Just a question, if you leave the Canoe Creek out there, that's country to me, why didn't you just stay out that way and that would have made it better for the pigeons?
Because the house is so, the house is so big for us, you know, it's a 200, 2,500 square feet house. I'm a tall guy, I'm in my knees all day. So I'm tired sometimes, you know, to clean the jar. The house was only me and my wife, my kids, you know, married and live, one in California, one in Colorado. So it's a big house for us, so we decided to move to the city.
I can understand that. I understand.
Any more questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions?
No further questions.
Thank you so much, sir.
If I could, just for the chairman of the commission, you've got the six criteria for the conditional use, they have to be answered in the affirmative. In the packet, I don't have a copy of 3.20, .32 of the Land Development Code. That is a, essentially a two-page or a page and a half set of requirements that the applicant will have to abide by as one of the conditions suggested and recommended by staff in the event that the commission is in favor of recommending approval on the conditional use. But it is an extensive section of the Land Development Code, and it does address the issues that have been addressed by the applicant and by staff.
Hearing everything that we've heard?
Well, I mean, I think we could discuss this a little bit. It's a little bit difficult for me to weigh in on this because on one side, you know, it appears that the applicant is meeting all of the criteria. On the other side, it appears that some of the residents are concerned, and it does not seem like the best place for this type of business, considering that it's in the downtown grid. I don't know, how do you guys feel about it?
Yeah, share the same concerns, you know, it's, it's a tough call.
It is a tough call. Because they are in the city, the city limits, and there you go. Now we just passed a new one that you can have by chickens, and now he comes in with 30 pigeons, no matter what.
I mean, the reality is with any animal.
Yeah.
Or any type of business, that when you're surrounded by other residential area, you know, you kind of have to respect.
Regardless of the growth we're going through, it's going to happen. Regardless, the growth we're going through, it's going to happen. We're going to be seeing more and more of it.
If I could, just to the commission, the six criteria are your guideposts to consider, and it's always advisable to reference those as sort of your roadmap to navigating through the issue. Not that you haven't done that, but that's, those are, those are the big conceptual points that have to be considered within the context of the specific application.
I mean, he has worked very hard to meet the criteria.
So finding number two is how is the conditional use consistent with the trends of development in the area or neighborhood as opposed to being detrimental to the area or neighborhood? I don't know of any other pigeon breeding, racing structures in the area where that maybe staff would, would know if there was any other ones. So that, that one factual matter, I'm not sure that this meets it. I don't, I don't know that it was really intended for this type of use either, though, so it's a little bit vague. And I agree where, where it says, private yards often used for personal hobbies and interests. However, typically, it would be personal hobbies that were interested that would not infringe upon other residents. Which, that's my only concern here, is that, you know, I feel that some of the residents have brought up some valid concerns about droppings, other pets. So that's, that's the only factual matter that I have a concern with.
Please refrain from making comments, the commission is deliberating. Yeah, you, public comment's been closed.
Any other opinions?
So I don't, I don't know that it would be, because they're only outside for such a short period of time, would it be any different than having a yard with chickens in it? Because, and then others are entitled to their hobbies, and they may have garages where they're working on vehicles and affecting other people as well. It might not be birds, but it might be allowed trucks they're working on. You know, I've lived on the grid, too, there's.
Well, the only reason I consider it different is because the pigeons are actually leaving the property. And returning, whereas chickens would not leave the property theoretically unless they got out or something.
It's no different than flying a drone.
And what's the, the path, which way are those pigeons flying?
Well, I don't think that's really relevant, but.
It's not much more different than a drone race.
You gotta know the path of the pigeons, which way they're going, so you know where the droppings are going to be, or where they're going to, you know.
We would look at it, people say, oh, drone flying around infringing.
Into your microphone, Mr. Kendo.
You'd say people flying around drones infringing on your privacy, they can.
True, but they're not supposed to do that either. That's also not allowed by the FAA, although people often break the rules, but that doesn't mean it's allowable.
Just a reminder for the commission, it's a recommendation that is being sought for the council. Whatever the recommendation, that's the pleasure of the commission. This will be heard on the 14th of September by city council.
Yep.
So I would like to make a motion to recommend denial of resolution number 2023-162R based on the six factual matters within the Land Development Code.
I second it.
I have a first, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are opposed?
No.
No.
Ms. Douglas, did you vote in favor of the motion?
Aye.
So the motion, the recommendation is for denial, which is passed by the commission 3 to 2, Mr. Kendo and Mr. Alexander voting against the motion. And Ms. Douglas, Ms. Carney, and Mr. Lantry in favor of the motion. So the motion carries 3 to 2. The recommendation will be heard by the city council, or taken into consideration by the city council on September 14th, 20, 2023, when it is heard by city council, all right? Okay.
Okay, we will, here now ordinance number 2023-44, DRCK CPA 23-00011.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tammy Recky, Senior Planner with Community Development. This item is to amend our comprehensive plan, the Recreation and Open Space element. So the purpose of the Recreation and Open Space element is to identify open space in recreation facilities, establish level of service standards for the provision of such facilities, and analyze current and projected park and recreational needs based on population projections and established level of service standards. So it is our recommendation to approve, and we are requesting the commission to approve ordinance 23-44. So we are updating the elements of the comprehensive plan based on the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and also to fulfill our obligations with Florida statutes in the comprehensive plan. So the main goal of this element is to create safe and inclusive opportunities for recreation, physical activity, enjoyment of nature, and personal interactions that build social infrastructure and cultivate sense of community for all St. Cloud residents. So on your agenda packet, we had the existing element and a column for existing element and a column for proposed element, where we show some of the changes that were made. Overall, the main, the main change when, when it came to the goals and objectives of the, the element is that before, the level of service was defined by size of parks. So we, the idea was for this many residents, we need this many acres of park. And that has changed to proximity of parks to the residents. So it was just, well, it was a better way to serve the residents, providing more opportunities for open space in parks that are closer to them as is describing the elements, rather than just thinking about the size. There's still some standards for size, there's different levels of parks that were included, but one of the main changes was considering how close these opportunities are to the residents, rather than just their size. So that's kind of summary of objectives 1.1 and 1.2. 1.3 and 1.4 is, all of this is keeping in mind that we want to provide more inclusive environments and safe environments for users and residents, and also promote and motivate healthy activity. And by changing the level of standard for proximity is a way to decrease vehicle parking pressures on the parks, because we want them to be more accessible and closer, and also provide safe routes and alternate modes. For objectives 1.5 and 1.6 is, it relates to the goal to maintain natural resources in the city, and also to continue to coordinate and collaborate with public and private interests to achieve this adopted level of service standards. And then finally, 1.7 is kind of a continuation of that, and it mentions kind of the collaboration of the city with county facilities and the school facilities as we see fit for, to meet those level of services and improve accessibility of recreation facilities for the residents. This element is meeting the strategic plan goals of growth management and infrastructure, and is our recommendation to approve ordinance 23-44. We are here if you have any questions.
I have a question. What was the last time that this open space and recreation element was updated?
It was 2002. Yeah.
Yeah. Long overdue.
Yes.
That's a long time.
Yeah. Well, comprehensive plans are usually planned 10 to 20 years, so we're right, right about that, that mark to update this element, yes.
With the growth that we're facing in this county by itself.
Well, I mean, it's, it's pretty evident when you look at the map of the level of service and where it's lacking. You see all the new development, and that's where all the level of service is lacking.
Yes.
So I think this is great, that you guys are doing this. I did have a question about something, I'm going to have to find it. Forgive me, I, I lost it. It was something related to new development and when it would be required. There was something in here about less than 20 units would be a recommendation, that it would be fee-based, or, or something. Let me see if I can find it.
As a for 1.6, 1.2.
I'm sorry, what was that?
1.6, 1.2, and 3. Page 5 of this.
Yes, okay, here we go.
Yes, so right now, what the, what the element and the, and the parks plan covers are public facilities. A lot of the new developments, they have their own open space requirements and things that they're, that they do, but they're not, they're usually maintained by the HOA. So the people in those new developments do have access to open space, so this focuses more on public facilities.
Yeah, understood. Specifically, what I was wondering is where it says, for new development within areas of the city that have a sufficient parks level of service, the preference shall be payment of fees. But I did not see anything in here for new development within areas of the city that would have insufficient level of service.
So that would be met through the other goals, if they're considered insufficient. This is, just means that if, if there are smaller developments, that the Parks and Recreation Department rather have them pay fees to apply to, to other, than dedicating a special area, just for that small development.
Money in lieu of space. Yeah, if there's already sufficient.
Right, and that money would go towards the Parks and Recreation.
Correct, to be allocated as seen fit.
Right.
Dag Marie Segarra, Deputy Director. The following policy, 1.6.4, speaks of those areas that are not sufficient, that there's could be a negotiation with the Directors of Parks and Rec for acquisition of, further accu.
Acquisition.
Acquisition of land. And also, we are in the, 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 the city is currently also updating the Parks Master Plan, which we are identifying areas to, as parks for the regional parks and urban parks. And those areas in the, that Tammy was saying that they were already meeting the level of services, those fees will be in contribution for, to acquire those lands that we are identifying as future parks, to meet those, the requirement of level of services for those areas that are not meeting them. I hope I answer your question.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so. And then, policy 1.7.3 says, the city shall actively seek out shared use agreements with the Osceola County School District on used school recreation spaces. And then also, the city, 1.74, the city shall review the annual updates of the Osceola Countywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan as they are done, make necessary updates to this element to achieve consistency. So how does this, explain the language in 1.65, 1.73, 1.74, and how that we would be able to work with the county? Because, you know, the, the trend is now that the county approves development, and then it typically is, is along the, the JPA and the JPA boundary, and then it, it ends up being annexed into the city of St. Cloud. So how are we actively working with the county to make sure that some of that land or development that would be occurring, we would be able to set aside, or have the developer set aside a certain amount of land for parks?
I'm glad that you asked that question. As a matter of fact, we've been having meetings with the county. As a matter of fact, we have one today, and discussing different changes of future land use destinations on areas that are outside the city limits but within the JPA, and that was part of the conversation. About a month ago, we met with Parks and Recs and, and county staff, and we were going over areas where we were in need of parks. I believe that we are also, the Parks and Recreation has some agreements with the school districts to address policies 1.7.3 and 1.7.4 to collaborate and work in tandem with the school districts to make those parks available during the summer for the city's residents. And so we are, this is the first element of all 12, 12 elements in a comprehensive plan, I think, or seven? I, I can't remember, there are a lot. So this is the first element that we're bringing forward. So we are going to be making amendments to all of the elements in the comprehensive plan. And in conjunction with that, we, we are working with the county to make, to resolve those inconsistencies and seek the city's need for future development within the JPA. So we are, we're narrowing that bridge, and we're collaborating to make that happen.
That's, that's great news.
Yes.
And staff also reviews the projects in the county within the JPA, so we know what's coming in and can kind of coordinate efforts that way.
Excellent. Guess any other questions? Comments?
I want. Policy 1.4.2, why was that removed?
You have a question.
Peg Horn Nature Park?
Sorry.
Why was that language taken out? 1.4.2?
Sorry, let me, 1.4.
1.4.2, relating to Peg Horn Nature Park, it was, the entirety was struck through.
Oh, no, no, what, some of these policies that the were struck, struck through is because we are already in compliance. So they became the part, the new goal that we're trying to achieve. So it was no longer needed, because we, we already have those improvements.
1.5.3, the city shall continue to provide access for all users to East Lake Toho. Why was that removed?
Because the access is already being granted, and it becomes that, the improvements to those access, the new policy.
Everything that's been stricken is already there.
Yeah, well, this was all, it was already there before, it was. Redminda here, that says the she's, the city shall continue.
Continue, yeah, right.
And this is part of, right now, this is part of the city code, correct?
This is, right now, is part of the comprehensive plan, but 1.5.3 became that those access that the city has would need to be improved. So the new policy is to continue, to improve those access that they were required back in 2002.
Any other questions?
With this, with this change from where we had minimum acreage per residence, is this gonna take away from the total acreage that we would otherwise have? The original says, "Per so many record, for so many residents, we have so many acres of parks that should be dedicated." Is that changing? Will there be less acreage now, per residence?
No, not necessarily. So, even though the level of service is not measured by the acreage anymore, the new policy still states that we have a minimum of park sizes that we want to achieve within the distance. So, the description of the, of the parks have the acreage. So, neighborhood park, two acres or greater, community park, five acres or greater. So, that's being compensated by the size of the parks and how many of those type of parks we need.
Okay, thank you so much. We have no other comments for the city? Open up for public comments? No public comments? Any comments amongst yourselves? You'd like to deliberate?
No, I don't have any comments. I'm glad that this is being updated. It's long overdue.
So, we have no comments amongst ourselves. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash four-four based on the sixteen findings within the Land Development Code.
For a second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-two-three dash forty-five, DRCK CDA twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-one.
Tammy Recky, Senior Planner with Community Development. This ordinance's purpose is to allow accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in the agricultural and residential zoning districts throughout the city. This ordinance established regulations and standards for the ADUs that promote a variety of housing options and affordable rental options as well and to protect the stability, property values, and the single-family residential character. So, our request today is approval of ordinance twenty-three dash forty-five and our recommendation is approval. A little bit of background on ADUs, it's been something that the residents have been asking from us for almost two years. It's been, there's been an interest of having these accessory dwelling units for the aging population. A lot of families wanna, their older parents should have a place and live close to them or young, their younger adult children should also have an independent area where they could live because of the rising of housing costs. So, we've seen a lot of people come to us with this request. We don't have anything in our code that allows for that. Kissimmee, Osceola County, Orange County, Orlando, so all the communities around us, they have that in their code already. So, we look at different municipalities and different, different places similar to St. Cloud to see what they were doing to propose something for the city. So, some of the values of ADUs is affordability because it can be used as an affordable housing tool for low and moderate income individuals. As I mentioned, care for the elderly and persons with disabilities, provide an opportunity for them to live on the same lot as their parents or other caregivers, and also family flexibility. Young adult children, changes, et cetera. So, the sections of the code where we're proposing changes, first, starting with the definitions, section two point one, point one, to add accessory dwelling definition that is consistent with what's stated in Florida statutes. So, accessory dwelling unit is a dwelling unit that exists either as part of a principal dwelling or as an accessory building on the same lot and is secondary and incidental to the use of the property as a single-family residential that has a separate kitchen, bathroom, and sleeping area unit. Other parts of the code that would be amended would be the section three point ten, point eight, the table three dash four footnotes, because as of now, we don't allow any units less than nine hundred square feet. So, we're asking to amend that to exclude accessory dwelling units. So, those specifically could be smaller potentially. And in no case shall total maximum lot coverage exceed fifty percent for all primary accessory structures, is the language that we have now. And we are also requesting that the ADUs are excluded from this calculation since we can achieve, achieve the same purpose without having that lot coverage requirement. That we would also be amending table three dash five, which is the allowed uses for agricultural and residential zones. So, allowing the table would add accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in agricultural and all residential zones except for the mobile home zonings. And then, as general standards, this is just kind of a summary of what the ordinance states. We would, we're proposing to allow one ADU per parcel and that ADU can either be attached to the house or detached, but only one per parcel. To be exempt from density calculations, we would establish a maximum size of up to sixty percent of this principal structure, but not to exceed a thousand square feet if it's a lot less than an acre. As far as dimensional standards, the setbacks will follow the same as the principal structure setbacks determined by their zoning district, but the rear yard setback would be a minimum of ten feet from the property line. And for parking requirements, we would request one parking space specifically for the ADU. So, they would have to meet that on top of the regular parking requirements for the single-family homes according to their district. For architectural standards, it needs to be consistent with building design and finishes of the principal building. So, they have to complement each other. For occupancy standards, a valid homestead would be required and it would be not allowed for short-term rental, which by our code is defined by thirty days or less. The impact fees would be assessed under the impact fee schedule and maybe waived for affordable housing units. And addressing in utilities, they would be required to have a separate address, but may not be required to have a separate meter depending on how the ADU is. And here are just some examples of what would be permitted with this ordinance. So, the first example on the top left is a typical detached ADU. So, obviously, they would still need to follow the building code requirements related to building separation. The height will not exceed the height of the principal structure and they would be located in the, they would have to be located in the backyard, which is where the typical accessory structure location is if they're detached units. For attached units, there's other options. It can be next to their house, it can be a unit over the garage. It could be a converted garage as long as there's meeting those parking requirements that I mentioned. We've, we've had like examples of house expansions that done that in the city. Like, of course, we don't allow these type of units right now, but we have people who added an extra bedroom to their house, converted their garage, and as long as they still meet the parking requirements that was allowed. So, that was just an example. Or it could be, another example of attached ADU would be just a second floor. These are other examples of what that could look like. So, the detached ADU would have to match the character of the house, the same materials, colors, architectural standards from the principal structure. The intent is not to just create anything. We want to keep the character of the neighborhood. We want to make sure it's to scale. It's not something that's gonna call out attention from being different. It's just something that blends into the neighborhood. I included an example of a floor plan. By our definition, an ADU would be considered a completely independent living unit. So, this will not be just, you know, creating a little room in the backyard and renting that out. It'd have to be a complete independent unit. It has to have a kitchen, a bathroom, and a living area. So, it could be like a studio apartment or it could be like a one-bedroom apartment depending on the size that they could build on their lot. And then, that's, there's an example of an attached unit with an access through the back of the house. So, again, it's not calling out that it's something completely separate or foreign. It's just kind of blending in with the style and that's our goal in allowing those units. Here's just an example of what that would look like in a typical single-family neighborhood. This image was created by Orange County Planning and Zoning Division when they developed their, their ADU ordinance. They just thought it would be a good visual for us. The, the, the structures highlighted in yellow show what the ADUs could look like in the neighborhood if everyone in the street decided to have one in the backyard. But it's just, just a way to see that it's supposed to all come together and to blend in nicely and, again, just provide opportunities for, for people to have those, those housing options that are more affordable. And this is an aerial view of the same examples. So, that's an approximately, approximately what the sixty percent, up to sixty percent of the main structure lot coverage will look like considering the size of the, that ADUs can go up to. So, our main goal really is to growth management, create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through sustaining planning for all generations. This ordinance would allow people to, to have more housing options, to create affordable units throughout the city and plan for all generations. That's the need that we, that we've been hearing from our residents when they come to us asking if, if this is possible in their property. A lot of them are interested in having their parents, their in-laws, people that they want to keep close, but that they also want them to have an independent space. So, our recommendation is approval of this ordinance and we are here if you have any questions for us.
You know we will.
Yes.
Thank you. So, what is the criteria for establishing whether or not it's affordable, for affordable rental purposes? Is that based on the mean income in the county? Or how do you guys designate whether or not it's for affordable rental purposes?
Yes, so, that's actually determined by the Housing for Urban Development Department. So, at a minimum, the affordable rate needs to be for a person or persons with moderate income to extremely low income, very low income or low income. So, it just, it's on, we would use their scale as a reference. And for them to qualify as an affordable rental, they would need to provide an affidavit stating that, that the unit will be rented at an affordable rate and not being used as like a regular rental unit.
Okay.
Is that, is that the same where you're gonna be checking for their impact fees?
Yes. So, when they apply for the ADU, they provide that paperwork. We would, we would assess and, and make sure that what they are, if they're applying for, for affordable housing purposes, that we can maybe waive some of the fees.
Osceola County has passed that already, haven't they, ADUs?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Harmony has them out there and they're called mother-in-law homes.
Yes. And I think in the county, they're called accessory living units if you go to their code.
So, in order to get this approved, you would have to have an existing structure and have to have homestead exemption, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I think you might have mentioned it, but in terms of the construction style for the ADU, like you can't just put a manufactured home or something here, right?
Correct, yes. The construction, building materials, and design has to match the principal structure.
Well, you could if it was already a manufactured home, I believe.
Yes, exactly. So, if they already have a manufacturer home and, and those zonings that is allowed, then potentially, yes. But not on a regular other material.
Okay.
Are you gonna open up for tiny homes?
So, right now, we have a maximum dwelling size allowed, which is up to sixty percent of the principal structure or the a thousand feet if it's less than one acre. At this time, we didn't, we didn't specify a minimum dwelling size because of the way that we define what the ADU is, considering that it needs to have a kitchen, a bathroom, a living area, and still obviously meet building codes. We, we feel confident that that will, will regulate the kind of units that we want to see.
So, how would you calculate the required one parking space? Would that use the same calculation for a typical single-family home? That they would have to have just a designated amount of area that would be for parking for that one space?
Yeah, so, right now is, we consider parking space, off-street parking space. So, it could be a space on their driveway. Doesn't have to necessarily be a covered parking space. So, what most houses have is like two covered parking spaces and then two uncovered driveway parking spaces.
So, for instance, if it was a single-family home and it had a large enough driveway that could accommodate, you know, let's say it had an extra square footage, right? Then they wouldn't need to add anything, right?
Correct, yeah.
Because it does say a minimum of one off-street parking space shall be provided for the ADU in addition to the required parking. So, I guess in addition to the required parking just means if they have more than required, they could consider that more than required could be the additional.
Correct. Right now, in our code for single-family homes, we require four off-street parking spaces. So, if they already have that four, they're meeting the requirement for their current house. So, if they want to add an ADU, they would even, either need to provide an additional parking space that meets our code or, like you mentioned, if they have a longer driveway that already can accommodate an extra car, that would be considered.
I don't know what's in the code currently for a parking space, but does that have to be in some way improved? In other words, does it have to have like lime rock or something? Couldn't just park in the grass and say this area of grass is?
Yeah, it needs to be an improved parking area with accessible.
But it doesn't require pavement, right? We don't require pavement in our code or?
It needs to be AD accessible.
Okay, so, yeah, that would most likely require pavement. Okay.
Has to be designated?
I'm sorry?
Has to be designated?
So now, if it has to be ADA accessible, I'm just, I'm just thinking hypothetically here, right? Um, let's say you build an accessory dwelling unit in your backyard, and you have a driveway, and you have a sidewalk. Would this mean that they would have to add a sidewalk as well to get from the designated parking, if there was extra space in the driveway, for someone to get back to the accessory dwelling unit? Or is that-
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
Uh, so what I'm asking is, uh, we have accessibility requirements for the parking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so what I'm asking is, let's say somebody adds an accessory dwelling unit in their backyard, and it's accessible from, to the main structure, but not necessarily from to the new structure. Does, do they have to comply with having accessibility all the way from?
One structure to the other.
Yeah, one structure to the other, or?
For accessory dwelling units, that's not a requirement.
Okay.
Zach Marisagai, Deputy Director, uh, for residential, um, eh, the ADA is, um, accessibility is not a requirement. So the ADA just needs to demonstrate that they can fit the additional vehicle if they wanna add the ADU. But they don't have to provide an access path or, or an ADA requirement. The parking, that if they're gonna add a parking, it will have to be stabilized. But it doesn't have to be compliant because in a residential district, we don't require that. Now, our Land Development Code requires that for a single-family, they provide four and a half parking spaces for residential. We have one of the most stricter parking code, eh, for residential in any central Florida. So we feel pretty confident that the half a park, the half of a, the point five parking is an on-street parking. If they have their right of way to park the additional park, park the car in the, and on the road, we will consider that the additional parking for the right, for the ADU.
So how would this affect existing homes that are, let's say, built fifty years ago or something? Where we didn't have the requirement for four and a half spaces? Would they have to meet that?
Yes.
In addition to the one space for the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, and we believe that this is, uh, gonna be a challenge for the grid. We recognize that.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so there's going to be areas of the city that there're going to be limitations for this ADU. Now, if the demand exists and, and the council and the city, um, recognize that the grid should be a place that we should concentrate this at the ADUs, then we can make exemptions on the parking on the speci- on the grid, for example.
Yeah, I think that should be considered because it does, it does seem like it would be difficult in some places, especially in the mo- some of the more aged places to comply with, not only the extra space, but the four and a half required for a single-family home.
My house is a hundred years old and only have one parking.
Yeah, and that was certainly a consideration of that when we were writing and creating this ordinance. You are more than welcome to make a recommendation to the city council to have staff reevaluate some sort of exemption to the grid or a specific, uh, the issue with the grid, eh, we recognize that with all the activity that is happening, there's been a lot of complaints with people parking on the roads and blocking the road and all of that. And because this is our first time adopting this type of ordinance, we needed to see how was gonna be the demand. Um, and that's why we didn't create any exemptions. But if, it's the pleasure of this commission to ask staff to look further and to make recommendations of those type of extension to present in front of the city council, we'll be more than happy to do so.
And I agree. I mean, all over the city, we have issues with on-street parking. I mean, every neighborhood you go into, right? Um, but having said that, you know, if, if, let's say this accessory dwelling unit was for a mother-in-law or some, you know, an aging parent or something like that, most likely, they wouldn't have a vehicle. So it seems a little, um,
excessive.
A little excessive to, you know, but, you know, understanding that, you know, you wouldn't want somebody abusing that privilege either, and just, you know, allowing people to live there and, and not have any parking, so. Um, so yeah, I probably will recommend that you look at some sort of exception. I don't know exactly what that is, but, um, you can probably work that out with the city council.
Do you have any other questions? None with questions, we'll open, close that and open up to the public. Crickets, close to the public. Any questions amongst ourselves? None, if there's no questions amongst ourselves, I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-five, uh, based on the sixteen findings within the Land Development Code.
Okay.
I'll think of it.
First and second, do we?
Can I?
Can you, would like to make a motion?
Well, yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash four-five. Um, with the exception of, I think the city's, um, staff should look at the requirement for uh, off-street parking and see if there's some way they can make an exception, uh, to allow in some conditions, possibly in the grid, you know, uh, but allow some conditions for that to be, to, for people to be exempt from that off-street parking
On older homes.
Requirement, um, and that's based on the sixteen findings within the Land Development Code.
Do we?
I know that was a lot.
Could we, that's, that's a second motion. Ms. Douglas's motion has been seconded, so that's gonna be the one voted on first by the commission, whichever.
Okay.
Your motion, Mr. Lantry, would require a second.
I'll second Mr. Lantry's.
Okay, so that, okay, we have two motions with seconds. Ms. Douglas's motion was seconded first, so that will be addressed by the commission first.
Okay.
By way of a vote.
I have Ms. Douglas's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All against? So, Mr. Lantry's motion, all in favor?
We, we've got her, if her, her, her motion satisfies the case, so. But the, the city staff has the feedback from Mr. Lantry, and that's really what-
And I know the council does watch these.
Exactly, so that, that'll, that'll, I'm certain, get communicated to the council.
I'm sure they'll agree that there should be some sort of exception. I don't know exactly what that is, but, you know, you guys agree apparently, so.
Okay.
Sure we can come to some kind of conclusion there.
We've had a long night. Do I have a motion for the conclusion of our day?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourned.
Thank you very much. Good job, all.